We will call the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, June 30th.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
Stand for a pledge. Legitimately notification will be led by Pastor Mark Hutton and the West Minister of Presbyterian Church here in Ottawa. I pledge allegiance to the United States. All right, Pastor. Good morning. Good morning. What a pleasure it is to be in person with you all. Let us pray. God indeed, it is a pleasure as things seem to be returning to what we think as normal. But God help us to remember that we are far from normal. There is still a pandemic that is raging, maybe not quite so much here in Franklin County, but across the world. So we pray for those who are in harm's way. Those who are affected by the death of loved ones, those who are affected by an overwhelmed health system, and those who are affected with the disease itself. God, we pray that your mercy may intervene and that this virus may dissipate and leave this earth. God, we also give you thanks for your abundance, but sometimes your abundance can overwhelm us as we are being overwhelmed a little bit by the abundance of rain right now. I pray for those county workers who are out on the roads, working to keep roads clear, fix and repair them, keep ditches clear, that you will keep them safe as they go about the work of serving this county and its residents. God, I give you thanks for the wisdom that is present in this commission, and I pray that you will continue to lead them and guide them with wisdom as they work to serve this county. We give you thanks for the county workers who serve in so many different ways, for all the ways that they bless us and allow us to live in a wonderful place. And God, we also give you thanks for the freedom that we celebrate this weekend, for those who live and those who died, so that we can celebrate and have the freedoms we so are blessed with. God, we give you thanks and praise, most importantly, for your grace, your mercy, your forgiveness, and your love. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, we don't have any correspondence organizational business. I don't see anyone signed up for public comment. They didn't write down the consent agenda, let me get that pulled up. Looks like we have. Meeting minutes from June 23rd. Minutes from our study session on the 28th. Tax change orders are the amount of negative 222.46 cents. Claim vouchers are 182,323.59, and payroll is 1,208,631.99. That's the consent agenda, would anyone care to make a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. First item of business is to consider approving a cost of living adjustment for county employees. Larry Maple, our human resource director is here.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Each year, we present a request to the board to consider approving the cost of living adjustment, or COLA, for county employees. And as you may recall, 1% COLA was budgeted for 2021, dependent upon review of our revenues. And as such, staff has reviewed the 2021 revenues and determined we are within the appropriate targets to implement the 1% COLA. So, once approved, the COLA would go in effect the beginning of the June pay period and be reflected on the July paycheck for employees. So, does anyone have any questions?
Happy to be able to do it. Is there a... Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the 1% cost of living adjustment for county employees effective the pay period beginning June 21, this year?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, thank you. Second item is to consider appointing Janet Peters to the RMH Board of Trustees.
As the five of you are aware, the Board of County Commissioners is responsible for appointing members to the RMH Board of Trustees. Here recently, you've appointed Paul Bean, as well as John Cohen and Dr. Frank. This is another one, Janet Peters. I think all of you know Janet. Janet's fantastic, member of the community, can't recommend her for this board highly enough. And so, would certainly recommend it and try to answer any questions that you have.
Nothing, Janet Peters would be excellent to be on this board. So I'll make a motion to appoint Janet Peters to the RMH Board of Trustees. Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our third item of business is a rezoning application. Larry Walrath, our planning and building director is here. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, the best of chairman, commissioners. As you've indicated, the first item I have this morning is a rezoning for Mr. Wigger. This is to rezone approximately 10.7 acres from the A1 to the RE residential estate zoning. This matter was previously heard by the planning commission at a public hearing, and they have made a recommendation forward to you for the approval of this rezoning request. The purpose for this is to allow for the construction of a new residence. I think that the property that is affected here, it would be sold to another individual for the construction of the new residence. Again, the 10.73 acres would be rezoned from the agricultural zone to the state residential zoning district. And I would have nothing further to add other than what the recommendation is for the planning commission.
What, any questions on this one? Anyone care to approve, make a motion to approve rezoning application 2102-1838?
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Item four is also a rezoning application. When you're ready, Larry.
This is a rezoning, it's kind of two parts because the property that's affected here is being divided, and one of those parcels would be a little over 16 acres. But since the remainder is less than the required 40 for the A1 zone, it has to also be rezoned to the A2 transitional agricultural zoning district. Again, this matter was heard by the planning commission. They have forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners for the approval of this rezoning. The purpose for that rezoning is to allow for a member of the family to build a new home. So, again, we're seeing some growth that we feel is consistent with the overall policies of our competency plan, while at the same time maintaining a strong agricultural economy and agricultural community with the rural goals and objectives that are set forth in our competency plan. So, I would recommend that you take the planning commission's recommendation and approve this rezoning request.
All right. Any questions on this one? This rezoning application 2103-1853, would anyone care to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Fourth, fifth item is to consider a proposal for the expansion of landfills, construction and demolition portion.
Commissioners, as you know, we've taken a number of steps over the last year to, that have really brought us to this point. Based on all of the data and all of the analysis, staff is recommending that we move forward with the proposal from SES engineers to design and perform a permit modification to expand the footprint of our existing CND landfill. That's a construction and demolition landfill. Once we get through this, we should have a permit in place that will allow the landfill to remain at its present location for the next 50-plus years, which is a very big deal for this county and the citizens and really the region. I can go through each one of the scope items if you'd like, or I can simply answer any questions that you may have about the proposal.
Really continuation of the conversation we had previously, so?
That is correct.
And I know we've talked about, or we've talked recently about, as early as Monday about, or as recently as Monday about how to pay for this. I would like some leeway from the board to explore potentially using stimulus funds to do this. You know, $250,000 is a big expense for Franklin County. And while the solid waste fund balances look good, this would, I mean, this is an appreciable hit to that. So, I would like to sit down with our consultant, talk through that, maybe even talk to our auditor, make sure that we don't have any issues there. And then, before we pulled the trigger on that, so to speak, would certainly be welcome to come back and ask the five of you for formal permission to use those funds. But if you're okay with it, and you're willing to enter into this agreement, I would ask that you let staff at least explore that possibility, so.
Makes sense to me, considering there's a couple revenue sources that would be reasonable for this or qualify, but that's the only one that we're given the deadline to spend, so. And they are fairly limited in what they can be spent on, and so if this is qualifying, that makes sense.
Commissioners, you know, a big part of this project is related to stormwater. We have to mitigate all of the stormwater that falls on this site. Part of this, a big part of this design and assessment and those things is related to that. There will be stormwater detention ponds and drainage structures and those sorts of things associated with this project. And certainly, those items, we feel strongly are supported in the stimulus dollars.
All right. An affirmative motion would be to approve a proposal from CSC engineers to provide design and permitting services for the expansion of the Franklin County Construction and Demolition Landfill for a fee not to exceed $252,000. Anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion in affirmative.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Looks like our sixth item is procedural. We need to consider approving, approve holding a public hearing to close out the CDBG CV grant program. Paul Bean, economic development directors here?
Morning, commissioners. This is, like you said, this is just a procedural part of this grant. It's basically closing it out, it's giving the public an opportunity to comment on it before we close it out. You've heard me say we've helped, and thanks to this partnership, we've helped 11 businesses. We've also, I can tell you, it's impacted 27 jobs, and 25 of those were low to moderate income. So, we helped those that needed the help the most. And I think that's something all of us can be proud of for this program. And I certainly appreciate the support and the willingness of the county leadership, staff and elected officials for letting us do this program. I think it was a great program, and we got to put it all in the county, so thank you for that. So, the procedural stuff, all.
All right, it looks like we can do that today?
Yeah, so what the board would need to do, you need to open up a public hearing and then solicit any comments on closing out the CDBG process. That'll take a motion and then take a motion to close it. And then, once you've done that, someone would need to make a motion to go, provided there's no public comment on it, make a motion to close out this process, so.
All right. Well, let's begin now. Would anyone like to make a motion to open a public hearing to discuss closing out the CDBG CV grant program?
I'm going to make a motion. Second.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor, so.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So, are there any public comments regarding closing the CDBG CV grant program? Please speak if you do step up. Last again, last chance, does not appear there is. So, we would need a motion to close the public hearing to discuss the CDBG CV grant program.
Motion.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So, we would need a motion to close out the CDBG CV grant program.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. Paul's efforts on this has been really out, you know, out beyond what a normal person probably would devote time and trouble to this. And some of the amounts weren't big amounts, but he still spent a lot of time. And I know, I was at several city meetings and other meetings where he continually tried to convince people with to apply and use every dime of it. So, that, you got my motion to close it.
Okay, second. All in favor of closing out the CDBG CV grant program, so?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I guess this is the end of our item of business, it does. It's the staff reports.
So, Cole, I would like to say a few words about Larry and present him a plaque, but it may be more appropriate to let Casey and Nick and some of my other staff give their report first, and then I can end with Larry and maybe roll into the five of you, and you can make any comments you want about Larry.
I'd like a great plan. Do you have anything other than Larry? Anything you need to report on?
No, just employee luncheon today, hope to see all five of you there for that, but no.
All right. Casey, go ahead.
Okay, a couple things. The quarterly newsletter will come out today after the employee luncheon, because I want to put some pictures of that in it, so look for it this afternoon. And there is an article about Don and Larry in that, that's on our website right now and Facebook also. But I want everybody to see that. And then, I don't know if Nick will talk about COVID at all, but last week, Dr. Ransom put out some information about the Delta variant of COVID that we put out for him. And he also has an idea to try and encourage younger population to get their vaccine because of the Delta variant, and have, having the health department have a booth at the fair where they can have a dunk tank, and doctors himself and some of his colleagues would volunteer to be dunked, like get your shot and then dunk a doc, kind of theme. So, before we go diving headfirst into making plans for something like that, we want to make sure that the commissioners are okay with the health department holding a vaccine clinic at the fair.
And we've said, this idea originated with Dr. Ransom, but Casey and I talked through it, we discussed it with Brenda Fitz and Meyer to see, because obviously she'll be on board right around that time. She is on board with it, thinks it's a great idea. I think we could get pretty creative with it, but we just wanted to make sure that the five of you have no objections. It's just another way to, you know, the more shots we can get in people's arms, obviously, the better off this community's going to be. But want the five of you to be okay with something like that.
As long as it's not dunk a commissioner.
Well, and I honestly, I thought that maybe Robbins and I could get up there, because people might not want to dunk doctors, but I guarantee you, there are people that want to dunk Nick and I. So, we probably get some shots in people's arms doing that, but.
Can I get a third shot? Yeah, I think that's definitely fit in our mission there at the health department to get as many people vaccinated as possible. Maybe, all right?
Okay, that's all I have.
What day was that?
What?
Did you have a day for that?
No, they're going to look into having it three days during the fair.
Oh, during the fair.
Like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I think, are the days, so.
Yeah, and this is an idea very much in its conceptual phase. I mean, obviously, there will be a cost attached, because we will need to pay health department personnel to be there. But we've got COVID funds for that specific purpose. I mean, this is really, I mean, this is arguably the best use of those funds, and this is CARES Act. We're not even talking about Biden's stimulus yet. So, there will not be a net financial impact, or a negative financial impact to the county.
Sheriff?
Good morning. I've not been here for a few weeks due to other office commitments that I've had around. So, updates on our vehicles, just so that you're aware. Our vehicles are, have made it into, or most of our vehicles have made it into our upfitter that will be doing all that. The problem that they're having is getting some of the equipment that will actually go into the vehicles. People still aren't working in some of the plants where they make little chips and stuff like that. So, that's kind of delaying a few things there. Our inmate count is staying steady. We don't have quite, we're not busting at the seams quite like we were, but we do still have people farmed out. We are still in the 70s, which is better than being up in the 80s where we were, so. And we have that. And then, just to let you guys know, this last week, part of where I was, was the National Sheriff's Conference. I did attend the, as a member of the Homeland, not, sorry, not Homeland Security, the Border Security Committee down there. So, we had, we did have a good meeting, I have information from that that I had to bring back and pass on to the administrator on a few things. And also, I was able to attend the classes that I needed to receive my designation as a certified homeland protection professional. So, I appreciate the opportunity that I had to go down and get those things finished up. And I believe that our office in the county will benefit from that extra education and training that I've received. Over, it's been a couple-year process to get that done, and so I appreciate the opportunity. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'll answer them.
Yeah, I got a question, Jeff. Midland Ranger, they're pulling cars out on the main line again yesterday, and that 59 highway closed for substantial period of time. And they did split the train apart, I guess, once maybe, to let people go through. Did you get any calls on that?
I'm not aware of that, I could check into it and see if we were notified of that. Across the state, this has been a conversation that we've had, because there is a statute that says that they can only block roads for a certain, a set period of time, and then they have to have it open. However, the guidance that we have received is that we should not enforce that, because it falls under somehow, it's an economic thing that we can, that we're not supposed to interfere with, with business and stuff. And since that's a business, there's, it's crazy restrictions on it. So, typically, when we get those, if we, if it's going to be too long of a time, we make phone calls and try to get them to do that. But taking enforcement on those things is guidance that we've been, we've been told to try to steer away from that if we can.
I just get calls on when they, when they do it, because they're, they're pretty inconsiderate to the public when they're doing it.
Well, and it, and it's not a regular thing at that crossing, so it kind of sticks out in people's mind when they see that. The one where it's the, seems to be the most inconvenient on a regular basis is the, is on 68 headed out to Pomona.
Right.
And they block, they block there quite a bit as well, so. But I can check and see if we did receive a phone.
I just, just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
They did it again.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Paul, anything? All right, Nick?
Good morning, Commissioner. We have seen an increase in COVID cases over the past week. We kind of anticipated we'd see some of those coming about with the camps and the gatherings that we've been seeing. EpiTraxxas this morning is reporting 11 active cases. OFP has six cases that we know of that haven't shown up there yet. So, we've got a total of 17 new cases over the weekend. The majority of those are coming from the camps that we have going on in our community. We have worked closely with the counselors. Today, we're testing 29 counselors from Acosta County to see if we can get a hold on this. A lot of the church camps aren't having any camp this week, so hopefully, we can get this figured out and move through it without a lot of cases. With that, one of the things that I've been talking to Derek about is when we're going to stop testing. As you know, last week, we had one to zero case throughout the whole week. So, we were thinking that with MOD going away sometime soon, we were told it was, that's the testing place that we use, we send it up to the city. The state's been funding us sending to that place instead of going to the state for quite a while. That was set to end into June. So, we've been trying to figure out what route to go. The state's been giving us some guidance that they're going to open Cahill back up to everybody and let us send results there. They've been talking about having a courier service pick up. We're really not getting a lot of information on that, but that's kind of been the push of where they want us to go. The Ottawa Police Department has been great throughout most of COVID, taking our tests for us every day up to Lenexa where MOD's at. So, over the next few weeks, we're going to have to have a solid plan on what we're going to do with testing. You've got a lot of our pharmacies doing testing now, you've got OFP doing testing. There's plenty of places for people to get tests if they need them. So, the conversations are going to be, are we going to continue to do routine testing? Or do we want to allow, push that to the pharmacies or push that to OFP? And then, the testing we do with Cahill is like what we're doing today with the 29 people and doing the more larger testings if we've got some breakouts going on, instead of just offering everyday tests. Because up to this week, we were lucky to be doing five a day. So, to be transporting or having OFP transport five tests a day, it kind of seems like a waste of time to some of it, especially seeing the lack of cases that we had. So, these are things that I, I prepare, I plan that Derek or I will bring into you over the next couple of weeks to help you guys make a decision on which route we want to go. But with that, I will plan on keeping you up to date on where we're at with the camps and what that's going to look like. But the majority of these cases that we've seen have been cases that came in and left. And that's kind of how we got a, we got a eye on it, is we're seeing cases outside of our community that traced back into our community. So, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that.
Are these kids, most of them?
Kids and middle-aged counselors, most of them are.
So, we'll monitor the. So we'll monitor this, this surge. And then provided that it, you know, I guess dissipates, so to speak, the intention is to, to start talking about what it looks like to, to shut down testing. Do the five of you have any, or at least substantially modify it? I mean, we've still got the trailer operating and then staff in the trailer. And, and I think, and Nick and I still need to discuss that, but that would likely go away. And if we're testing at all, it would probably be something within the Health Department there, maybe just on certain days. But I want to make sure that, that the five of you don't have any strong objections to that. We won't make that decision without you, but we'll probably strategically start planning on how we're going to push communications out on that, what that looks like. And I don't want to start those efforts if the five of you don't think it's the right direction. But again, we'll let this surge play out and see what it brings before we really dig into that.
And heaven forbid, if we have another uptick in the fall, we could start again. It's not like we shut it down and it's done.
Yeah, and, and we're not, I've been pretty clear with Nick, our temporary COVID staff, we have no intention at this point in time of, of doing, I mean, we're going to keep them all on board and just wait and see what the fall brings. Because I think the, the short sighted thing would be to, to start making those staffing decisions and then turn around and, and need them again in the fall. And again, I say this a lot, but keep in mind that CARES Act funds are paying for all of this. So these are not property tax dollars.
I think you guys have done an excellent job of tailoring our response to the needs so far. So if you see that it's ready to start winding down, at least that portion of it, I, you know, reason to object. Anyone else?
I just, brought it come up the other day, just a, I thought, thinking about it. David mentioned, we have a big storage of hand sanitizers.
We have less now. We've distributed, Tom and Alan have distributed most of it.
Okay. All I think I was thinking about was a two big event coming out, the tractor show and the car show. If, if it's there, I need to say something down or whatever, you know. I thought it might be a good idea to offer a, a bunch of that where they can have it on hand, hand it out to people that are working there, and then people that are attending there, make it, make it available with their, because there's a lot of food vendors and, and other things there that that could be used.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Be a good idea for it.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to talk with Alan and Tom about that and see, yeah, I think that's a great idea. And if we still have a palette of it then, then absolutely. But yeah, whatever we have left, I think it would be appropriate to push out at a venue like that. So yeah, you bet.
And with the fair having a full carnival this year, initially, two weeks ago, they were only going to have two rides. Now they're having a full carnival. It'd be beneficial and that's the conversation we've had as well of pushing it out there so people could hand sanitize, hopefully to keep from spreading it to the rides. So there has been some discussion, at least with the fair on that.
Fair, too, would be another good one.
So.
Sure.
All right. Is there any questions for me?
Think so.
Thank you.
David Lee, Public Works.
We experienced seven inches of rain last Friday in, in several locations. It ranged anywhere from four to seven inches. Obviously, that amount of water in a couple hour period did more damage to the roads. Our folks are working as hard and fast as they can. We just ask for patience from the public, which has actually been pretty good this, this time around. We're expecting maybe another couple of inches of rain today. That was at least according to the National Weather Service. Any additional rain is just going to exacerbate the situation. In many of the locations, we're just making minor repairs now to, to make the roads passable with the full intentions of coming back whenever time and weather and those sorts of things allow us to, to make more permanent fixes on those things. From a project standpoint, Circle C Paving, who's going to be doing our chip seal, I spoke with them this week. They are planning to, they, they've been delayed by the weather as well. But right now, we've got a, a start date of the first of August to come in and, and take care of all that. We, a little bit of a coordinating effort between the chip seal and the KDOT project just north of Lane. Kilo Construction is going to be doing that. I've, Kilo doesn't have a firm date just yet. I honestly don't expect them to get started until after we're done with the chip seal, which is not a problem. But if, if by chance they're, they're occurring at the same time, I've already spoken with both entities to make them aware that we may have to do some coordinating to, to get through there. So, so there's that. On Monday, we talked about the facilities and drainage study and those sorts of things. I've been in contact with Bartlett West Engineers out of Lawrence to look at providing a proposal to do that work for us. That firm has worked in the city of Ottawa numerous times, very familiar with the city process. And I feel like they are the best choice to kind of help us through that process. So they are, they are aware of the project and going to be working on a proposal for us. I've also been in contact with CFS engineers regarding the Jackson Road Bridge Deck. As you know, that, you know, you can see on that bridge deck that it's in terrible condition. They went out as a part of the project where we had planned to chip all the bad spots out and put a concrete cap on top of that. After they finished the, the site survey and measuring all of the poor locations, that bridge deck is even in worse condition than it appears on, on the surface. The construction estimate at the beginning, we, we had an estimate of about $250,000 to put the cap on, which was, you know, that's a big number, but felt like that would buy us, it was an investment in prolonging the life of that structure. But based on the new information, that construction estimate has ballooned to over $420,000. No longer makes sense in my mind to, to go that route. The, the efficiency rating for that bridge is almost 80. So structurally, it's in good shape. It's just the deck that is in poor condition. A new deck is going to cost in the neighborhood of $800,000 to repair or to replace. My thoughts, my suggestion is that we put a inch and a half asphalt overlay across that bridge deck to buy us a few years to save up money in order to replace the, the deck properly. I've already reached out to Kilo Construction. I have a proposal from them to, to do that. It is right at, it's just under $16,000 to put that inch and a half across the, the deck. I think that that is a, an appropriate intermediate step. It'll provide a nice driving service for the traveling public, and then it will buy us that period of time so that we can save money for the, the deck replacement.
The structural rating's still 80?
Yes. It's, you know, they consider the abutments and, and the components of that bridge deck. The problem with this particular deck is it's not a very thick deck. It's not as thick as they would put on today. That's part of the problem. But structurally, it remains sound. The, the engineers actually would rather us just continue to patch these spots until we're ready to replace the, the deck. But it's in such bad shape, and any thin coat of asphalt or concrete that we put on that is just going to pop out. Putting an inch and a half asphalt on there will, you know, temporarily provide a, a smooth surface, but it will also allow us, as things pop and, and we, new potholes develop, it gives us a little depth to be able to patch over that. Rather than, you know, the, the rebar under that, that deck right now is very shallow, which is another reason why we're having such spalling issues. And so this is a, I think, a reasonable response. And again, buys us a number of years to save dollars to take care of it properly. And so unless there's some objection, I'll probably be bringing that to you next week for formal approval. And then finally, on the Old 50 Project, yesterday was a deadline for the consultants to provide their statement of qualifications. I had sent that out to five or seven different companies and also advertised in the newspaper. We had five responses. I'm very happy with the, the, you know, the, the number of firms and the quality of the firms that responded to that. And so over the coming, next few weeks, we will be analyzing those statement of qualifications and ranking the firms, and we'll be bringing a recommendation to move forward with negotiations here in the next couple of weeks. A lot going on.
Thank you, Dave. Janet, nothing? All right, back to you, Derek. All right. I'm going to talk about Larry a little bit. So this was originally supposed to be Larry's last day with Franklin County. Oh, okay. Well.
Well, you'll get the last word, so.
But FEMA, as you are aware of, has updated the flood hazard boundary maps. And the timeframe for the public comments regarding the changes that were introduced has now exhausted. So we have until the, the end of September, well, actually, September 10th or something to amend our zoning regulations to include the references to the new maps and submit that back to FEMA. So I will be preparing the appropriate resolutions to get that accomplished. And you just needed to be aware that that has now exhausted. And we are one step closer to being able to utilize the amended FEMA flood hazard boundary maps.
Have the new maps caused any conflicts?
There were changes, both adding certain areas, but also removing certain areas. And those were where the comments were supposed to be made. They're supposed to come through our office and submitted them to FEMA. I think we received two.
Okay.
And those were submitted to FEMA several months ago. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. All right. So, yeah, the day was supposed to be Larry's last day. However, as all you know, we were fortunate enough to hire his successor, Kenny Cook. Kenny's starting on the 6th. And in discussing the transition with Larry, we both felt it would be best if there were just a, a smidge of overlap. And so Larry's going to stick around until the 16th and just get some things that were with the planning commission up through all of you. So Kenny's not brought in, you know, into the middle of certain projects. But so grateful for Larry's service. You know, it's interesting, we, we've hired quite a few department heads now in the last five years. And certainly, when I came on board, we were fortunate to have good department heads. So certainly, we've, we've had good department heads retire. But, but every time we've hired a new department head, you know, you look at, at the strengths that, that the, the one that's leaving had and, and what you're looking for, what would fit the vision. And every time, I was looking for something a little bit different. Like here are areas that, that we can improve. Here are things that we can do to, to, to make it even stronger. But in Larry's instance, I wanted the exact same thing. Exactly. Like I wanted another Larry Walrod. Wouldn't change a thing about Larry. Larry is, I think, the best example of a public servant that we have in this entire organization. Like he, he wants to help people. Like he wants to help people accomplish what it is that they want with their land. It's never been about Larry. It's never been about Larry's ego. Like it's been about helping people. Like I've seen Larry right in the middle of provocative situations, controversial situations. He, he never let his ego show. He never let his insecurity show. He was just rock solid. And I will tell you that, that on a personal level, I've learned so much about leadership and being a public servant from Larry. And so definitely appreciate him. And so Larry, I appreciate you. Thank you. Would love to hear thoughts from all of you as well before we present him with this plaque. So.
I'd say Larry's attitude towards the public and his job has served certainly his career very well, but us. When I talk to other people about Larry, I always say, he approaches the public with a can do attitude. They'll listen. I think the first thing he does, sit down and, and listen to their goals, what they want to do. And then he follows the rules, same as anybody in his position. He opens that book and, and helps them find a way, well, let's see how we can help you, how we can help you do this. It's a can do attitude. It's a, a positive track, how, working within the rules, he can get that done. And, and it's served us very well. You know, for a department that deals with people's homes, I mean, first of all, a lot of people don't move out to the county because they want more rules and more regulation.
Right.
So they're behind it. It's an uphill battle to begin with. But for a department who deals with regulating people's homes, that's a very sensitive thing. I get almost entirely positive comments, positive feedbacks from Larry. His office and just shows a very difficult job can be, can be done successfully. And like I say, it's a career of doing it, doing it well. And we were lucky to have him. So he served the county, our interests very well. And going to, going to miss Larry.
Go this way.
I guess I'm the only one left here when Larry started. It's been a great 20 years. I appreciate everything you've done for us. I don't, shouldn't be this way as a commissioner, but I want to thank Casey for her story that she wrote. Anybody has a chance to read it? I think we owe Larry, you know, the reason why I even had to be convinced to hire Larry when we hired Larry. You know, I didn't know Larry, but we're thankful that we had a chairman at that time, Mr. Ed Taylor, that had good connections with Larry. And he convinced me, we need to hire Larry. So we did. And one of the best things we ever did. And I did serve on the planning board. And it was real quick for me to see it after serving on the planning board than other commissioners, just for the reason I seen what he brought to the planning board and continuity and how they all worked with him and, and how he kept them all, not only in line, but he let them keep him. And, you know, they kept each other in line on the situation. So if y'all have a chance to read Casey's stories, she did a great job.
Thanks for your time, Larry. I, Larry and I talked about this at one time. I actually was sitting on the planning commission when Larry came on. And what's kind of different is here, I'm sitting up on the bench when he's leaving. So anyway, thanks for your time.
I know that when you were out here, you said two good years. You'd give us two good years. Thanks for your two good years. Nobody told me I would need a Kleenex today. Not too many people we would cry over Larry, but we appreciate you.
Well, Larry and I go back all the way to from about the beginning. And I didn't think Larry would ever, ever. And I didn't think Larry would ever, uh, ever retire. And I hope he never would retire. And I was amazed at Larry because the way it works with the public, you know, we have, uh, a lot of little issues out there with our planning and zoning and Larry comes in to, uh, to mitigate a little variances that are a lot of times just common sense. Variances in building and, and construction operations. And Larry's been a, uh, a real perfect person to accomplish that without everybody getting all excited and mad at each other to, uh, to compromise the issues. And, and common sense seems to always be in Larry's, uh, efforts as a planning and commission board. And he works well with the planning commission board. And I've been, uh, real fortunate to listen to Larry's stories about his gardening. And it's, uh, amazing about them, he'll tell you, he likes to, he likes to talk about gardening forever if you let him, so. But we appreciate everything Larry's done over the years as, as our planning and zoning department head. And, uh, we wish him well in the future. And, uh, I just hope, uh, his legacy will, you know, continue on with a new person. And I, I hope Larry is, uh, trains him well in the next couple of weeks. So really wish that works out great. And, uh, just want to thank Larry for all the time he's given Franklin County. And, and I think all of Franklin County can appreciate Larry's efforts. So thank you, Larry.
Well, and, and I think the five of you know this, but Larry was instrumental in hiring his, um, successor. I mean, this is someone that, that Larry and I have been talking about off and on for an appreciable amount of time. This is, you know, in a lot of ways, his handpicked selection, someone he feels like does share his values and will do justice to his legacy here. And so, um, you know, you talk about a truly bittersweet moment. I'd, I'd, you know, I, I'll joke with Larry that I'd love to retire with Larry, but, um, you know, it is what it is. But, um, but Larry, thank you so much for everything that you've done for Franklin County. Like thank you so much. Would love for you to come up and, and take this plaque and maybe get a picture with all of us, so.
Can we, uh, get a picture with Larry and his staff as well that are in here?
Made a decision last night that the long was going away. I don't want to get that. That was a decision. Because there, they're coming in a long hold off in about three weeks.
Thank you. I can't see the last word. Do you have anything you want to say?
I don't know. Thank you, Larry.
See a quick commissioner's comments before we adjourn?
Yeah, we did. The only thing I had last week, uh, we did have our RCND meet face to face. First time we'd seen each other face to face of the year. And it was a really good meeting. We had the, uh, guest speaker there was Ron Brown, which is, uh, head of Southwest State. It's under a reorganization now. We're adding two or three more states there, doing it like conservation districts. We're actually going to be handling Montana and Nebraska. It's reconfigured. We used to be Harry Cloud. The other main person we had there was, uh, Mr. Bean. And, uh, we had a long discussion about economic development and tried maybe do a partnership deal with the six counties that, that represent the Lake Region. And my board has, uh, put, has, uh, agreed to put funds towards it. And working with Paul right now, and, and we're working with even Project 17 and trying to put something together where we can, uh, even get, even get, our main goal is to get the economic development people from six counties together and see what they can do to help each other. I mean, just like Paul said, we work, walk into workforce deals and so forth. If we can help our neighbor or that neighbor can help us in economic development, I think it's a good road to go. And Paul's been the first person I felt comfortable bringing this project to. And the funds we're using is a grant that I got here. I mentioned it a few months ago, the State Association. I worked to get that a $25,000 grant. And we dealt out $3,000 to each one of the RCND to do a project just like this. So my board has agreed to move forward. And Larry served on my board there for a long time too. And I used to see him leave from that board. He's represented Lynn County. It was real, made it real convenient for Larry being right here and didn't have to come from Lynn County to come to our board meeting. He was here on his job. So I appreciate for all that, Larry. That's all I got.
All right, Rod. I got that. Cool. All right, Ian.
I don't have anything to add.
I went to our RCND board meeting and then Don covered it perfectly. I did talk to, uh, Ron Johnson about the, uh, new district we're in. Cause we're in the far, uh, southeast corner of this district. And we're in with the Dakota's in Nebraska and Montana. And I said, how did, how did we get in that district? And he said, just the way it is. So be a little bit different, so. Anyway, it was a good meeting. And like, like Don said, it's the first time we've met in person. And appreciate Paul being there to go over the economic development and, and and what the six counties are in the district are trying to do and trying to work together with, uh, uh, cooperating with, uh, recycle opportunities if anything comes up between the six districts. To say, hey, we've got a good place to move some cardboard or newspaper or plastic or something like that. We could work together. It was just a good meeting.
I don't have anything to add either. If there's any last minute comments, we look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you. Is that all in favor of adjourned? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on, adjourn.